Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting and ask you if you have cell phones or other electronic devices, if you would either turn those off or silence them now, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant and you've come to address us on a case today, there are sign-up sheets, they look like this, they're on the table right outside the chambers, and if you would complete it, we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, we'll get right down to our business, which is skipping the approval of the minutes from the last three meetings because we don't have the right mix of commissioners here, and going right to continuance requests.
Okay, there are three uncontested requests for continuance. They would be item B-20 on your agenda, case PC 10-442, to defer that to March 24th; item B-21, to defer to April 28th; item B-22, to withdraw completely.
Did anyone come today to address us on any of those items just read, 20, 21, and 22 on our agenda? A motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve of the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
We also received two new requests for continuance of case item B-13, which is PC 10-437, to defer to April 14th, and also item B-18, which is case PC 10-276, to defer that to April 14th as well.
I know we have people who want to talk to us about item 13. Is there anyone who wants to talk to us about item 18? I'll take a motion to continue item 18 as requested, and then we'll talk about item 13. So move. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 18. Cast your votes. That's approved. Now, item 13, we have two people who signed up to talk to us about an item which has a continuance request. First of all, is the applicant here? David, that's yours?
Yes, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. The reason for the request, I had a family medical emergency last week when we originally scheduled to meet with the neighbors, that I found myself unable to attend that meeting. I then talked to the president of the HOA, Mr. Jeff Schilling, who I believe is here, and after speaking with both Mr. Schilling, Commissioner Irwin, and Councilman McAtee, we decided to postpone this hearing to allow us to appear at their regularly-scheduled April 5th neighborhood meeting, so that we could accomplish what would have been accomplished the week before. But I did work with the neighbors, and they were fully aware that this meeting was getting continued, and it was being continued not only at the request of us, but the planning commission member and the city council member.
Okay, let's hear from Mr. Schilling.
My name is Jeff Schilling. I'm at 2112 Hackberry Creek Avenue, and contrary to, I might say, to the staff report, this was first addressed at the January 14th meeting, so I'm not sure if this is four or now five continuances. We have, obviously, I don't have to reiterate to you that this is a huge burden to the residents, to take off work, to change sometimes flight plans and other requirements to be here. We have repeatedly voiced our concerns because of the failed traffic study. We maintain our position that this item should be denied, but if it's not going to be denied, we would like for this to be deferred at least 30 days to allow for us to have proper planning and to make sure that that be, or rather, so that that could be the last and final continuance. So our request would be, if you are going to continue this, that you continue this to April 28th or later, and make that the final and last continuance.
Okay, thank you very much. Sherri Compton, do you have anything additional? Okay, thank you. David, any objection to April 28th?
Yeah, we need it on the 14th. We've got contractual issues with our, and I understand the burden of coming down here, but they were on phone calls and email change with Buck, myself, they were fully aware that this was going to be continued. And so if they came down here, they did so because they wanted to be here.
I can agree with that, because until we vote to continue it, it's not continued, so.
Agreed, but when it's at the advice of the councilperson and the planning commissioner that we not have this meeting until we go to the April 5th meeting, I mean, I feel like I've done all I can do. It was my fault, I had a child in the hospital, there's nothing I could do, and so if the planning commissioner wants to take it out on somebody, take it out on me.
No, Dave, that's not necessary. We understand how it happened, and Buck?
What does continuing it to the 28th versus the 14th get us? What we've, you mentioned it's been continued several times, so what are you going to do between the 14th and the 28th that you haven't been able to do in this time?
I'm out of town on the 14th. The applicant's counsel knows that I'm out of town on the 14th, and one of our key residents is also traveling on the 14th.
Okay.
We have not requested a continuance, so.
No, no, I didn't mean to say that. I just, you know, it's been continued a few times, and I didn't know if there was something that was planned that was going to take place that, you know, couldn't have taken place already, but I understand if there's schedule conflicts, that's different.
I understand the applicant has hired legal counsel, maybe after meeting him, we'll need to learn that we need to hire legal counsel as well.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm real sympathetic to the numbers of continuances and to protesters or people that are concerned coming down here over and over and over and over, and I don't see that there's any harm in agreeing to the request of the continuance to the end of April. That's what.
Can we legally?
That it would be the absolute last?
No.
We can say we'd like it to be the last, and we don't want to.
We can, so we vote on.
Right, right. Okay.
So we're going to continue the table?
Well, we need a motion, but yes.
As I said, he's got contractual issues with that timeframe. The contract has a date. I know it's not a concern of those up here, but that's why the 14th was requested.
Maybe they want to ask for a couple-week extension or something. This has been, I think, something that's certainly a significant concern to the people who are there now, and they're in a situation where their, the traffic study says that their intersections are operating at level F, and clearly whatever comes next is not going to improve the situation for those folks, and I think their interests are certainly every bit as important as the interest of the applicant. So I'm certainly in favor of the 28th. Ms. Compton, do you want to say something? Give us your name and address, please.
Sherri Compton, 10608 Southwest 21st Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Thank you. I don't want it to sound like the HOA board is not compassionate to Mr. Box's request. We are not upset about this whatsoever. We understand things happen that are not in control, and we were glad we were going to be able to meet with him pretty quickly anyway. And the reason we do come is just like Wardperson Powers said, that's on the consent docket, it doesn't mean it's actually going to happen. So we are trying to be prepared for whatever takes place, and whenever that vote happens, we're going to be.
We appreciate that, and we understand it. We've been on your side. We haven't always sat up here.
Okay, thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you. We'll agree the 28th, and we're going to do our best to see if, we had problems getting the contract due the first time, so we'll do our best, and.
David, will you, on the 28th, still be able to attend the homeowners' meeting on the 5th?
Yes.
And it'll still be a part of the process?
Yes.
So we'll move to continue this to the April 28th meeting?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 13 until the April 28th meeting. Cast your votes, and it's continued. Thank you. Buck, keep me posted, I'd like to sit in on that. Okay, any continuance requests from the public today? If not, the consent docket?
Okay, there are four items on the consent docket, which I will read. Item one is case PC 10-444, to rezone 6501 Southwestern Avenue. Item two is PC 10-445, to rezone 309 South Ann Arbor Avenue. Item three is PC 10-446, to rezone 7502 Southwest 59th Street. And item four is ABC 850, to do an ABC-1 overlay located at 2410 West Memorial Road.
Did anyone come to address us on these items today, numbers one through four on our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to talk about number three.
Okay. Anything, anyone else? Take a motion to approve items one, two, and four.
Move the items, one, two, and four.
Is there a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, except item three. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Is the applicant for item three here? And your name, please?
Roan Byrd. Roan Byrd.
And your address?
1000 West Wilshire Boulevard.
Thank you. Commissioner?
This is my question. I know that this is adjacent to an industrial, outdoor truck parking, et cetera, that little triangle, but what you propose to do with rezoning this from agricultural to I-2?
I am, my intent is, is I'm releasing Allied Waste, or Republic, on the track next to it, and we're going to expand, allow them for the expansion into that, into the space, so it would just be, it would just be what you see next to it.
It'll be just an extension of what you already have on the west part of that boundary.
On the, see where that rail spur is, so actually on the, the extension will for sure happen to the rail spur, and then if they want to cut, and they want to, you know, a drive cut off of 59, I'll allow them to extend on that side, or I'm just going to have that extra land, you know, because there's a crossover through that spur, so they're not going to be able to.
That was my question.
Okay, a motion?
A motion to approve item number three on the consent docket.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item three. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under items requiring separate vote, item five is ED 214, to dedicate a 60-foot street and utility easement located south of West Reno and west of South Richland Road, and also requesting a variance.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor's Commissioner Brian Kenneth Hewitt is our representative and applicant. There are two TEs. JJ had a good suggestion that this far out of town, that it might be smart to keep that as Southwest 5th instead of Laney Lane, so I'll just, we'll just delete TE number two, not ask for the variance, and just ask for your approval.
You're not asking?
No. I think it would be better if it was Southwest 5th for emergency services.
Be easier to find, for sure.
No doubt, so we're fine with it.
Okay, we're for approval deleting TE two?
Second.
Okay, and that is approved.
Thank you.
Chairman?
Brian?
Yes.
Do you want to have a brief for Nathan Laney? Yes, are you going to rename it or?
Yes, apparently that has already been named. JJ's told me we're going to pick another name, and we'll just, it'll be one of his kids' other names, so probably Laney. I didn't know if Laney's older or younger, but not mine, but some other name, yes.
Item six is DA 24-531. It's a lot split deed approval located at 300 South Mustang Road.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, Kelly Work, 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, and this application will require a variance, so it does not appear that we will have enough commissioners voting today.
We don't have six votes.
Oh, yeah, we don't have, we don't have six commissioners.
Yes, sir.
They're responsible for one of them.
So we'll have to, we'll have to continue it until the next meeting.
Which is the 14th of April, I believe? Okay, I'll take a motion for that?
Move to continue. Go ahead.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item six to the 14th of April. Thank you, Kelly. And that's approved.
Item seven is DA 24-532, a lot split deed approval located at 11901 Holland Street, also requesting a variance.
Is the applicant here? Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Mario Cordova. My, my address is 11901 Holland Street.
Okay, and just real quickly, what is it you plan to do, or what is it?
When I first bought the property, it's a little over two acres, and right now I'm in the process of finishing the building that I'm putting in the other, on the other part of the property, and since I'm not going to have any use for the acre that I'm trying to split right now, so I have a brother who's going to buy, going to also build, put a building there.
Okay, commissioners, it's a variance to TE one, and if we, we have six now.
That's second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance TE one. Cast your votes. That's approved. That's approved. Now we need a motion to approve the item.
Move to approve the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Do you own the property to the south?
Sorry?
Do you own the property to the south?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Item eight is S P U D 875, to rezone 16820 North Penn from P U D 460 to P U D 875.
Is, where's the city?
You know what, we heard a bunch of these, yeah, JJ?
The applicant's present.
And what about their fence?
I'm sorry?
What about their fence? If this is R-1, don't they, don't they, is this one of the ones that we heard?
We heard, there are eight of these around the city that are providing this network. Seven of them, all of them have fences that exceed the height by the code, by about a foot. Seven of them were approved last week at the Board of Adjustment. This one happened to be in a P U D that only allowed a fire station, so our only option was to come and rezone the P U D, and it allows for the fence that they're proposing. In this case, it's an eight-foot black-coated chain link with a foot at the top as a climbing deterrent, and then they, they put black slats in the fence to screen the building.
Why are we adding all these other uses? Or are we, are we adding these, the, like, the above-ground flammable liquid, or is that all part of it already?
They're all, it's all part of the fire station P U D.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, this is my comment about Google and an eight-foot chain link fence that's black and with black slats in it. Can't Google afford something nicer to cover its, whatever it is doing? I mean, is it not a big old black chain link fence with plastic things in it? Not that I object to the application, because I think that it's good, but if you've approved, if the Board of Adjustment has already approved seven of these things with the same chain link fence, I assume?
In some cases, it was just the chain link fence, in some it was plain chain link fence, one application had barbed wire at the top. So of the fences that were approved, this is the.
And the, and the city of Oklahoma City likes that.
They're all on city facilities, and the fences that were approved were similar to fences that were already on those facilities, like around water towers.
As I've said for years, we're the chain link capital of the world, and like to see something better, but.
Yeah, I made that point also at Board of Adjustment, and one of these is going to be right behind the Belle Isle Library, but I think, but what they're going for here is a combination of innocuous and forbidding, you know, I think they, they want them to be, to not look like something you want to go mess with, either because it would be inconvenient, or dangerous, or unproductive, uninteresting, whatever, so they're pretty basic.
I'm not opposing the applica, I'm just.
That's my editorial for today, and I'll move.
We have a motion and a second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item nine, S P U D 882, to rezone 540 Southeast 82nd Street from S P U D 848 to S P U D 882.
Is the applicant here? Well, let's kick nine to the heel of the docket and see if the applicant appears. Let's go to number 10.
Item 10 is P U D 1606, to rezone 2500 Northeast 30th from R-1 and R-4 to P U D 1606.
Hello, my name is Gary Jewell. I'm a project manager with Capital Improvement, SoCal City Public Schools, and this piece of property you see here, it's, it's been our maintenance and transportation facility since the late 60s, early 70s. Somehow or another, during the whole process, it stayed R-1 and R-4. So it's been the same thing it's been since, like I said, in 1970. We're just wanting to, in the future, be able to put up some nicer fence. It, right now, has eight-foot chain link fence, double three-strand barbed wires going all the way around it, and we're also getting ready to put up some additional parking for our needs for our employees, so we thought it was about time we make this thing right, so.
Have money for that right now?
Well, that was the other, the, the parking we already had funded.
Sure.
That we, we, actually, we're going to have District One, Oklahoma County, is going to take care of the parking lot for us. When we had planned on this for the fencing, it was before all the big budget cuts.
Right.
So my question is also, is if we approve this, you allow us some time to be able to do some of the changes to the fence? We were only going to change the fence on Miramar, the west side and south side, into this. Steel picket fence will be the eight-foot, I think you probably had some pictures of it, the eight-foot with the curved top.
Right.
And again, if you guys approve this, we would like, maybe have some time, you pass some of these budget cuts.
Okay.
My questions about this application have to do with, again, the other things that are included, like the communications towers and broadcast telecommunications antennas, above-ground flammable liquid storage, I guess gasoline, you need that, is it something?
That is, I think that's just standard for, if I'm not mistaken, on I-2 that is allowable to do there. We're not, we have not proposed to do any kind of.
Yeah, I am not crazy about the idea of adding all that stuff, just willy-nilly, and all the language in here about signage and all that kind of stuff, and if we don't actually need that for what we're going to use it for, I'd just as soon eliminate it.
Well, I, I do believe, and I could be wrong on this, God, correct me, but it just falls in I-2. If you have I-2 zoned property, then you're allowed, and you have to meet those requirements for all those different things, and then that is allowable deal, this not has to come back.
That might be true, but you're asking for a P U D here, so.
Correct, but P U D with basically an I-2 type zoning, so. And I find if we want to take the cell tower out, we're not planning on any time to sell tower anytime soon either, so I mean, that's not anywhere, and also the, there's an old-school property, Edison School, we're in the process of demoing that also to get, it's been there since the 40s, it's been an eyesore for quite a while, been abandoned, and we're planning on starting demo on that next week. Do you need any kind of antennas or anything like that with your communication system? I don't know how you communicate with your drivers and all, but. We actually have a repeater that we use that's downtown, they're getting ready to relocate that onto the Chase Building, but I, we've never had one there at the property that I know of, so. But again, we didn't put that in, it was what was in the standard verbiage to go along with the applicant.
I get that. JJ, couldn't we, couldn't we trim this down a little bit? And I have absolutely no trouble at all with the use they intend to make of the property, but I don't see any reason for it to become just sort of a general I-2 site, if that's not, you know, what they intend to use it for, or what they need.
We can sit down with him after the meeting, and we'll go through these uses, and we can pull the ones out that they don't need for exactly what they're doing at the location.
Would it be, would it be a huge inconvenience for you if we continued this two weeks?
The only two I'd eliminate would be the two communications uses.
I mean, I'm not, if we want to take that out, I'm not, we're not, we don't have a problem taking it out, so I mean, I'd rather not.
Do it now?
I'd just say the broadcast towers and telecommunications towers, because everything else I look at personally seems to be related to, maybe with the exception of cultural exhibits, but that doesn't necessarily disturb me. Everything else seems to be limited to their use and would be necessary for their use.
Right, and that's why it's listed on there too.
Other than those two.
For school maintenance or transportation.
Yeah, I mean, they may need antennas to continue their communication service, but telecom towers and broadcast towers, I think those two are probably ones that we'd want to take another look at if they wanted to add to that. Other than that, I think the rest of them are pretty good.
Yeah, and if you want to exempt that out of this approval?
Right.
I'm more than fine with that, that's not something we required having, and we, there's nothing we even looked at even doing any time remotely at all, so.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay.
All right, take a motion then. Commissioners?
I'll move approval, limit, deleting use, communication towers and broadcast towers.
And, and we're in agreement as far as the fence goes, right, and that, that type of fence, we could, at the time when money's fine.
Yeah, we don't condition this on time.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 10, deleting the towers. Cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 11 is P U D 1608, to rezone 19-217 Northwestern Avenue from P U D 1569 to P U D 1608.
Hi, David Kennedy, on behalf of the applicant, my address is 1601 Northwest Expressway, and this is a revamp, obviously not too far removed from last year when PUD 1569 was adopted, involving kind of a change with respect to some developmental regulations. Essentially, the person in charge of this project for the applicant has changed since last year, and we took a look at last year's application, which essentially had site-proof screening along the south and west, and then 50 feet worth of concrete, and then a 50-foot setback, and we thought that really could have been, could have been done better, and so have worked with the neighborhood and revamped the design statement so that essentially we've got no site-proof screening at the border, you know, the property line. We would have site-proof screening consisting of a wall which essentially would wall off this property from the neighborhood 15 feet from the property line. There would be, instead of concrete, there would be landscape buffer in between, and otherwise, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be walled off along Western, we'd have a wrought iron fence. I did know something in the staff comments about wanting some of the development standards from 9.1A, which kind of relates to properties that are visible from the neighborhood, adopted with respect to Western, and I'm not sure exactly what that meant, but I think we would certainly commit that anything that's not a door or window that's visible from Western would be 100% brick. So with respect to the, what we're calling Track 1 on the north end, that would be retail along 192nd. Nothing has changed from last year. We have same uses, same developmental standards. So if anybody has any questions, the applicant's here, or I, you know, I can attempt to answer them also.
Well, the building things that face the neighborhoods to the west and south, those will be brick?
Yes, essentially, that's just a solid brick wall, which is either a wall or the backside of the storage buildings.
Okay.
I didn't quite follow what you're saying about the wall and where it's going to be placed. Are you saying you're putting your landscape buffer on the neighbor's side of your wall?
We've got the property line on the west and the south, then we would have 15 feet of landscape buffer on our site. feet of landscape buffer on our site, and then our, basically, site-proof wall from one end up to the, to the, the south end up along the west side would be essentially just a brick wall.
Okay, again, my question was, the landscape buffer will be on the side, that is, the neighbor's side of the wall?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
No one signed up, commissioners?
From the backside of the storage units will be brick.
Pardon?
The backside of the storage, so it will be brick, okay?
Will be brick.
And so, with respect to the neighborhood to the east, the one that's across western, what will be visible to them?
Wrought iron fence, and then, you know, kind of the intake building, and some storage along that end. Our proposal would be to add at least a sentence to section nine-point-one-B, which would say that if it's not a door or a window and it's facing western, it will be one-hundred percent brick.
Okay.
Again, commissioners, no one signed up. Move for approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item eleven. Cast your votes, and it's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve is S.P. four eighty-five to operate a crematorium in the I-two district located at thirteen thirty-six West Main Street.
Good afternoon, David Box, five-two-two Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Wade Jackson, who is also here with me. What we have before you is a special permit to operate a crematorium. Here in this building, my client currently operates a pet crematorium. This would be adding three machines to cremate humans. When we look, what you're getting handed out is a series of pictures of the surrounding environment, the first picture being the subject property. That's where Mr. Jackson currently operates the pet crematorium. It's one of the nicer buildings up and down Main Street, it's got architectural metal panels, and as you turn through it, you see some of the limitations of the site. Immediately to the west, you have a semi-truck weigh station, they have some outdoor storage with some sizable equipment outside. And then as you flip through, you see, you know, just a series of industrial-type buildings, some of which are operating, some of which have, looks like they have been abandoned. We did receive a protest letter. The last three or four pictures in this are pictures of the site where the protester submitted the letter from. As you see, it's, there it is on the screen now, it's a large, windowless, industrial-type building. She mentioned odors, I'll have Mr. Jackson get up here and address that issue. But I think it's important to note that all of these machines are manufactured to meet and exceed California emission standards, which I believe everybody at this point understands are some of the strictest emission standards around. Mr. Jackson also operates another crematorium in the city, and it's worth noting that that facility is actually located right next door to a restaurant. He has had over twenty thousand cremation processes in that facility, and he has never once had a single complaint on odor. The reason we come before you today in this site is this city, through the zoning code, has this as an allowed use through special permitting in I-two. When we look at the use, it's something that belongs in an I-two district, and I would submit that of all the I-two uses, this use probably has the least impact. There's almost no traffic, there's only one employee necessary to run the machines, it's not accessible to the public, and the emissions are minimal. There are far greater industrial uses, not only in this area, but all other industrial areas in the city, that are bigger impact, that create bigger impacts on the surrounding environment. So with that, I'd like Mr. Jackson just to introduce himself, kind of explain the process, and answer any questions in that regard.
Sir, give us your name and address, please.
Wade Jackson, one-six-one zero-eight Point Manor Lane, Edmond, Oklahoma.
Thank you.
So, I'm the owner of a current mortuary that we're trying to move down here, so we're all under one roof, for multiple reasons. And we've been in business currently since two thousand eight, I've done over twenty thousand cremations, and have a restaurant that literally butts up to my property line. We've never had a complaint about odor, and quite frankly, a crematory at sixteen-hundred degrees in the stack does not produce odor, and it's just, it just doesn't, it doesn't happen. I understand the complaint letter, but, you know, we're upwind from that facility, and I don't know what it is, I think a lot of times is because of what's going in it. And there's kind of a taboo associated with it, but I think council's well aware that there's crematories all over Oklahoma City that have bumped up to residential areas, are in far more areas than what we're in, and to my knowledge, there's been no odor complaints in many of these, and are well-respected funeral homes, so, as far as I'm concerned, there's no signage on the building. We kind of want to operate anonymously and basically get in and out, nobody know what we do, so, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. For about seven years. No, and we've got people right next to us, you see a garage door, just to the other side of that, they're there every day. I went and talked to them when I was doing this, and they said, nope, not a problem, thanks for letting us know. And I would assume they're substantially closer than the people that sent the letter in, so, but I, you know, honestly, any smell down there probably is gonna be associated to us just because of, you know, there's a big taboo with what we do, but what we do is a necessity, and that's why we seek this kind of zoning, and we don't want to be a burden to the area, and I think we'll probably enhance it, because we'll be there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and, you know, we'll make sure things are done properly, so.
We have approved a number of these over the years scattered around the city, many of them very close to residential areas. They don't emit any odor, we've never had any complaints, and no one's signed up now.
Well, I appreciate the arguments, and we've talked about this on the phone. This is on Main Street, and here's, here's my, and probably I was on the planning commission if in fact we did approve the special permit in two thousand and eight. I don't remember it, but it wouldn't be something that would rise to the level of me being concerned, a pet crematorium. But when you start doing human crematorium businesses, and you have that facility where you are now, pardon me, then you're gonna add to it, the use of that part of the world on Main Street is bookended by the following, the twenty-one-C hotel that's at western and Main Street, and the concert venue that's right next to twenty-one-C, the commercial development that's right across the street, that's one bookend. And we had an application that we approved, that Rand Elliott is doing something at the very end on Pennsylvania, whatever that thing that he's doing. In between, I drive this a lot, and it was a route that I took for years, fully realizing that it isn't a pretty sight, all of it, but there are buildings and places being renovated cared for better than they have been before. And you've got, not saturation, but you've got, you know, significant amounts of work involved in midtown, downtown, brick town, the quarter shore, all that. The other element of the downtown is West Main Street, and there are those places in there that I think that if you were, if you had your pet crematorium, I don't think everybody cares, because I'm convinced about the odor, I'm convinced about the fact that probably people anticipate that through the smoke tech, there's gonna be ashes like Auschwitz, but that doesn't happen. I'm convinced that all these machines work. But the fact that you're doing human crematorium activities, and you're building another building to do it, and you're adding to this, that's to be constructed adjacent to the suite currently housing...
We're not, Mr. Bright, we're not building another building.
Well, it says right here.
The buildout of the interior space, it's already there.
It says will be located in our suite to be constructed adjacent to the suite currently housing the animal crematorium.
Correct.
What does that mean?
Well, that means you have one building and the suite adjacent to it within these four walls and under this roof.
Well, then you're not constructing, you're remodeling.
Well, we can call it, sure.
Well, I mean, you're not, you're not, you're not, you're not changing the footprint of that building where you are now.
That is correct.
That's correct, well, nevertheless, it's the use of that building. I don't object to the pet cemetery, but I do object to a human crematorium being involved in Main Street where there is a struggle for, even though I appreciate all the photographs that you sent, you didn't send the ones of the buildings that are being remodeled and taken care of and have landscape, et cetera. There are those on Main Street as well, and so therein lies my somewhat, well, no, it's an objection to it, and I really don't support it. I support what you're doing, I don't care, you know, that doesn't bother me, but I don't support human crematorium activities on Main Street, because I think that it has a shot to be better in connection with the whole development of downtown, the core of downtown, that's the last remaining, and this facility, this activity should be someplace else. Those are my comments.
Well, I would disagree, I fail to see how, if pet crematorium, it was allowed and is appropriate, how human crematorium uses would not be. We don't have a sign. Once we're done talking about this today at planning commission and ultimate council, no one will ever know. And the reason I showed you just these pictures is just because that's what's surrounding us. This is far removed from the twenty-one-C, this is blocks and blocks and blocks to the west. And again, it's zoned I-two. It could be by right without coming before this body, things that are so much worse. This, this building is probably the nicest building in these several blocks, and nobody's ever gonna know what it is. But the fact that it's zoned I-two, you could have serious industrial uses, similar to what is happening right next door. The Jesus House is immediately south of us, other uses, the windowless building is a manufacturing facility, so, I think it's nothing more than, as my client said, it's this taboo. But if pet crematorium is appropriate, and the same emission standards apply, if what we're doing here is whether or not the use is appropriate, I would submit that this use, via the special permit, makes total sense and is appropriate. We're not gonna have a big, you know, neon light saying we're, you know, human crematorium happening here, no one will ever know.
Commissioners, other comments, discussion, no one signed up? Second, we have a motion and a second to approve item twelve, cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item thirteen was continued. Item fourteen is S.P.U.D. eight eighty to rezone ninety-one thirteen North Bryant from R-one to S.P.U.D. eight eighty.
Hello, I'm Andrew Nelson with ninety-one thirteen North Bryant, Oklahoma City.
Okay, and you have a landscape business, is that...
Yes, sir.
Fourteen.
Have you, have you read the staff report? Are you aware that they're recommending that you remove certain uses from your list of allowed uses?
Yes, whenever I read that, it was literally on my iPhone, and I didn't, I couldn't find the exact details, what, what were they trying to remove?
If you want to take a copy here, and you can read, just read it life-size, so to speak.
I think the idea is to narrow your application to what it is you're really going to do with the property specifically.
Certainly.
And if you're okay with that, then I think you'll probably be okay with the suggestions that they're making. And if you're not okay with that, then we need to talk about it.
The only, yeah, the only thing that Lance and I talked about was keeping the above-ground flammable liquid storage, that's just to put a five-hundred-gallon tank for fuel to refill our, our equipment or trucks on there. And he had mentioned he was going to change that on there, but apparently it wasn't changed. That's the only thing that I see on there that I would request get changed. Yes, I...
Yeah, the liquid storage.
Yeah.
Again, no one signed up.
I'm with approval.
You'd change the uses?
With change suggested by the staff report.
So, we're gonna remove the, leave T.E. two there, but remove...
Above-ground flammable liquid storage.
Above-ground flammable, yeah, the storage.
And we're gonna, we're gonna narrow the several uses to be accessory to your particular business, basically.
So, the ones we'll keep is administrative and professional office, construction, sales and services, and horticulture?
But those are limited to a landscape contract?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to condition to approve item fourteen. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item fifteen is S.P.U.D. eight eighty-one to rezone seventy-five thirteen Newberry Road from double-A to S.P.U.D. eight eighty-one.
And your name and address, please.
Joy Trent, excuse me, Joy Trent, seventy-five thirteen Newberry, Oklahoma City.
Okay, and your application is similar to the one we just heard?
Yes, very similar.
And you'll have a trailer for a caretaker there, is that...
I actually live there.
Okay.
I think we have photos.
I'm sorry?
I'm sure we have photos here somewhere.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments? No one's signed up.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item fifteen, cast your votes, and you're approved, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item sixteen is C-sixty-seven eighty-six, the preliminary plot of Bentwood Villows, located west of Highway one fifty-two and south of Southwest Fifty-Ninth Street, also requesting variance.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, on behalf of the applicant, what you have before you today is a preliminary plot that conforms to the recently approved P.U.D. We agreed to the TEs and are requesting a variance to T.E. number two due to the community being gated and also limited access to ODOT right-of-way.
Okay, commissioners, no one signed up?
Question on the subdivision regulations from JJ. The variance that we're being asked to approve is that this has thirty-two lots for one entrance, that the subreg says thirty lots, right? Well, these thirty lots have sixty-four units on those thirty lots. So, does the subdivision regulations on a thirty-lot issue only anticipate one unit on one lot? And it's, you've doubled them up, you know, you've got one, you've got one entrance for sixty-four units.
The way the subdivision regulations read, it's just number of lots.
Without regard to what's on the lot, and isn't this, isn't the purpose of the subdivision regulation to handle the traffic that comes in and out of this subdivision so that there's maybe two cars in a garage and they can get in and out, but you've got doubled up on, when you have duplexes? So, the question is, probably from you guys, should not the subdivision regulations be looked at to take care of this kind of an application? I mean, right now, that's what it is, JJ, you said thirty lots, that's what you've got, but you've got two units on each lot.
We have divided entryway, and actually, you're looking at thirty units on the north side and thirty units on the south side and one directly in front of it.
I'm not gonna oppose the application because, you know, I'll vote for the variance, but I think that there's, there's a potential glitch in the subdivision regulations relating to this particular type, because we've got, we're getting a lot of duplexes, you know, lots and lots of duplex application.
We're gonna be looking at...
This case brings up an interesting point, that... This case brings up an interesting point that had not been addressed before.
We're going to be looking at the subdivision regulations in the very near future. We will include that.
Yeah, our first, as you know, our first big implementation task out of the adoption of the new conference plan is to take a look at ways to improve the subdivision regulations. So anything like this, might call it a glitch, but to revisit the intent of those access regulations and try to clarify things so that we do get thoughtful circulation, thoughtful development. And we will, we have a list started of things, questions that we've asked, clarification items, things that we'd like to improve.
Put this on your list.
I made a note.
It just got one item longer, Bob.
Yes, we will revisit it.
Good, all right.
Okay, no one has signed up. A motion on the variance?
I'll move to approve the variance, number two.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance to TE2. Cast your votes. The variance is approved.
And I'll move to approve the application.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, it's not. Five votes doesn't prove it.
No.
Your intention is a no. Okay, good.
Can we, can we come back? Can we continue? We have to have the variance. This was, it's always been the intention of the PUD. It was always shown in the master development plan in the PUD, and we've actually decreased the density from the PUD allowance.
Well, April 14th is the best I can offer. I mean, we can't do anything about it now.
Right, so can we come back April 14th?
Yes, if you'll take a continuance to April 14th, you'll be on the agenda.
And ask, okay.
Okay, thank you. A motion to continue item 16 to 14th of April. So we have a motion and a second to continue item 16. Cast your votes. And it is continued to the 14th.
Item 17 is S.P. 484 to operate an automobile dealership in the C3 district located at 500 West Britton Road.
Hello, my name is Erfan Fadozian. I'm the owner and I came last time. And after that, I'd met, we continued it based on not having enough wordage in the special permit. So we went back with Ms. Powers and JJ and talked about it and we came up with exactly what I wanted to do and I was happy with everything and they were happy with everything. So.
Well, since I missed the discussion last time, commissioners, those of you who are here can weigh in. Have we gotten the things done that you were discussing?
Yes, we were able to, you know, go through the list and, you know, they were agreeable with the issues that were raised and to the solutions that were suggested and I.
Good solutions.
I think so too. And it may even influence other property owners along.
Janice, I have a question on this. It's not an S.P.U.D. No, it's a special permit. And so the conditions of the special permit, the existing sign covered and all those things, that special permit then runs with the land. It becomes, it becomes what the applicant has to do, just as if it was an S.P.U.D., right? That's the legal effect of this, is they have to do this to get the, okay, that's fine.
I had that same question that time, so, yeah. I'll move the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Item 18 was continued. Item 19 is PUD 1607 to rezone 6910 Southwestern from C3 R1 and PUD 17 to PUD 1607.
Tim, you can be glad this is in 2006 and we're on item 59 and not item 18.
Well, and I'm not last anymore. You pushed one back. Tim Johnson, Johnson Associates, on behalf of the applicant. PUD 17, a number of years ago. This is kind of a remaining bypass piece of property for, it's bypassed for several reasons, just north of the old Western Drive-In Theater. It's surrounded on the west side by the Lightning Creek floodway and floodplain. It does have another blue line and some floodplain on the north side of this tract. So it's a very narrow frontage on Western. And as you can see by our PUD application, we've come before you with a very narrow PUD. It's very specific on what we're asking for. It's personal storage. We've requested, are going to require brick facades on the western side. We've requested outdoor storage around the tank battery that is located on the far east side of this tract, between that and the Lightning Creek area, as you can see by the We are immediately north of the Drive-In Theater and the tank storage is in the middle of the tract. So the narrow piece on the west will be buildings. The site schematic. And then the open storage would be in an area far removed from any of the frontage on Western, so it wouldn't be seen by Western. And as I mentioned, as the PUD mentions, there's a very wide floodplain at Lightning Creek that provides a buffer and a screen from the R1 zone property that's far to the We agree with the staff's TEs with the exception of number three, which talks about the sign. What Mark has handed out to you all is, this is a specific sign that they would like to use at this site. So we've given you three images. One shows its comparison to the Western Theater sign. And one shows it actually in place on Western, as you look down on the north side of West, or look north on Western, sorry. You would see it, as you're driving down Western, you'd see how small it looks. This sign matches their sign on their project at Shepherd Mall, except for that one has an S, this has a W. And they'd like to adhere to their standard. And the height of that sign at Shepherd Mall is 17 feet. So they're asking specifically for a 17-foot-high sign that looks like that picture.
Is the storage facility itself going to look like the one at Shepherd Mall?
I'm sorry, say it again.
The storage facility itself, is it going to look like the one at Shepherd Mall?
I think the facades you'll see on Western will, yes. Because it's had such a narrow frontage here, it won't be like that project because you can see that whole project.
Tim is assigned 17 feet tall?
Yes.
Then you'll change the PUD because you want it 20.
We asked for 20. Staff asked for eight.
And the other question is, does the Winchester Drive-In Theater still operate?
It does, seasonally.
That's a great sign.
Can we put a sign just like that that says personal storage?
If you'll show movies.
Any questions?
Again, no one has signed up, commissioners? Well, are we amending to the 17-foot sign?
17 feet, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 19, limiting the sign to 17 feet. Cast your votes. And you're approved.
Thank you so much.
We're going to try to rehear case number nine, if the applicant is here.
Yes.
For S.P.U.D. 882.
Is the applicant here?
You know, I'd be really inclined to continue this item since Commissioner Allen's not here anyway. So I'll move a two-week continuance.
Okay. The 14th of April. And JJ, we might contact Mr. Odom and let him know it would be a good idea to be here. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item nine to April 14th. Cast your votes. And it is continued.
And the remaining items are continued or withdrawn.
And we're now to, we don't have any planning commission committees these days. Planning commissioners, Mr. Ryan, why don't you talk to us about approval of minutes? You need to.
The method we have to approve minutes needs to be updated some. Right now, it's, we accumulate at least three meetings of minutes and we can't approve it yet. And I just think there's something needs to be done about that. Either we receive the minutes or let's have a majority of the members present approve you.
One way, I mean, obviously it makes sense not to have these things pile up. Do we want to just adopt a resolution to receive minutes in the future and a majority? As long as we have a quorum, we accept the minutes or?
If we do that, does it still provide a mechanism for commissioners to make corrections?
Yeah, that's the only qualification, if there are corrections. And there have been in the past.
I was asking. And I'm not really sure, I'll have to check on that, but I know the other things that you can do is to, if you're not here, you can look at the tape and familiarize yourself with what was going on and that kind of thing to, I mean, that's another way, I think, that they allow you to do that, but I'll check on that and see.
Okay.
Well, and JJ pointed out that the board of adjustment receives its minutes. They don't necessarily have to be the exact members that were.
But I, I'm new to an organization, part of an organization in which required people who actually were at the meeting to approve the minutes. Anybody can approve minutes. They can read the minutes. And if they have a problem with a question with them, they have an opportunity to get that question resolved at our meeting.
And it may, it may take an amendment to the bylaws. We need to look at that.
Yeah, I'm sure it is in the bylaws now.
I frankly don't see what the problem is, but.
It's a housekeeping issue, Janice, there's not any particular problem. It just seems like a sloppy way to do business is to let minutes accumulate like that.
You're hoping for efficiency, Commissioner Ryan?
Efficiency, yes. Anything at all, just to make a difference.
And it was an interesting discussion about the subdivision regulation and the single entry for 30 lots. A great point, Bob, that you brought up. That is the kind of thing that we catch usually when something comes before us and you see it and say, okay, well, we need to fine-tune that a bit. So that was an excellent find, catch, whatever you want to call it. Planning commissioners, anything from anybody else? Janice, obviously is inhaling to speak.
You know, I have kind of mixed feelings about bringing this up, but in January, we voted to approve the S.P.U.D. for the legacy cleaners at 49th and Western. And literally in the half hour before that meeting, I sat down with the applicant and gone through a list of concerns, many of which I think were shared by other members of the commission. And we went through them and we were able to resolve them, but we did not make those changes to the document at the time. And now there has been a lot of controversy about the application as it's gone forward to council. Not so much about the project itself, because I think, you know, ultimately, almost everybody agrees that it's a good project, but about what will happen to, or with respect to the currently existing gravel parking lot that sits on an R1 lot behind existing business and the existing house, also zoned R1, that is used as an office for that business. And I think in the process of the give and take about what will happen, you know, there have been very, I'll just be as objective as I can and say mixed signals given about whether in fact the project will move forward any time soon. And whether if planning commission had been aware that in fact it might not move forward for years and years, that would have affected the vote on the application. And about what is to become of these currently code violating parking lot and office in the event that once the zoning approval is obtained, if it is, that the project never moves forward or it doesn't move forward for five years or seven years or 10 years.
Janice, can, let me distill this so we're not talking so much about a specific case in case that somehow is an issue. Susan Rainey raised a bit of a concern about talking about a particular.
Well, I don't want to talk about the merits of it, I'm just saying.
No, no.
The question has come up then about whether it is appropriate for us to consider the timing of development as part of the approval, whether we should care. And for me, this is kind of a big issue. I really have come, as I've sat on the planning commission, to feel that the current state of existing law in Oklahoma, which is that once zoning is granted, it vests and runs with the land forever, is really a kind of an impractical approach. Because what it means is that zoning can only ever get more intense if an area changes dramatically in its flavor or, and, you know, shifts from I-2 to, you know, well, now we're going to clear it and you could actually build homes here. You know, the I-2 zoning is there forever, whether it is still appropriate to be I-2 or not, or commercial or whatever. And in boards like mine and Bob and yours, where there's an awful lot of property that actually precedes the original zoning code, and as the code has been updated and diversified, those pieces of property that were originally categorized C have become the most intense kind of commercial use possible, simply by default, as an operation of the law, basically, that it's like, oh, well, if it's, you can do anything commercial with it, you have to continue to be able to do anything with it, even though, you know, 100 years later, that may not necessarily be appropriate. So I think we need to look and perhaps work with legal and the management about, you know, seeing if even a court challenge might be appropriate to this concept that once zoning is in place, it lasts forever, to look at our regulations and ordinances and see if within currently existing law, it is possible for us to exercise a little bit more control over, you know, I mean, I think we look at projects that are usually brought to us by people who are waiting to close on property until they get their approval and there's really not much chance that they're going to sit on it just because of the economics involved. But if that's not always the case, then I think it may be more important for us to have a little bit more control. We currently are looking at, in my ward, of course, the corner of 50th and Western, which, you know, Chesapeake is owned as the mothership for their CNG business. Hopefully, that PUD is zoned narrowly enough that whoever acquires it and wants to make use of it will have to come back to us. But we haven't always been able to do that. And I think without being able to see into the future with a crystal ball, without knowing whether development will actually occur in accordance with what we approve at all, or in order to allow for just the change of circumstances, more than in one direction, more than just toward more intense, that it's really important that there be some kind of limitation on this idea that zoning lasts forever.
Here's my comment on that. Have we adopted yet the idea that if a PUD isn't developed within five years, it stops? Aren't we thinking about that? Something like there's a drop-dead date?
Susan, do you want to respond? We have explored and consulted with legal counsel about sunset clauses for PUDs. Seems like a few times, and had been advised that we could not require all planned unit developments to put in a sunset date at which you would revisit the zoning at that time. And is that correct, Susan?
Well, I would just say that the law is not clear. In Oklahoma, we don't have any law. There's other states and jurisdictions that allow it and others that don't. And so, you know, that's all I can tell you at this.
We've talked about that on several occasions over the years. I mean, I'm getting at, if that's a possibility, that, you know, within a certain number of years, if this is, if this PUD isn't developed, the.
number of years, if this is, if this PUD isn't developed, the PUD goes back or whatever it was. And that becomes kind of what Jim Allen was saying a meeting or two ago about this straight zoning, straight rezoning of a property. I think legally, that sticks with it. I mean, you know, once it's zoned, it's zoned. And you can modify that by doing overlay zoning, like we were trying, they tried to do at St. Anthony, the Presbyterian Hospital, when all that northeast side was done. I mean, to try to fix maybe some of the bad stuff that's undermined this zoning. But zoning is zoning and once it's done, that's my property. But a PUD that has all these restrictions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that will have all this stuff that we want to have happen, if it isn't done for a period of time, that's some control over the development of a piece of property that lies fallow. And, and so, you know, I agree with what you're saying about the fact, but I don't think that legally you can do anything about the fact if we say something is zoned from R1 to I-2, it is then and forever I-2 unless there's an overlay, like we've done with the scenic river and stockyards, et cetera. You know, there's things that can be done that fixes these things, but as far as just out there in the hinterlands, if it's zoned, it's zoned. Isn't that right, Susan? I think that's the law.
Well, that is true. Council can rezone property over, on their own initiative if facts changed or something like that, so I don't know that-
Can we initiate that?
Well, you'd have to depend on the facts and, you know, if facts have changed and circumstances and stuff.
There's another Plan OKC right there to initiate that.
But what I was going to say is, it's also a legislative thing that would help too if we would amend, you know, get that through our legislative and amend the PUD statutes that would give us a little bit more authority.
But there's another-
I think it will be no small thing to take on, there's no question about that.
There's another issue though that relates to this and relates to a particular recent case. Oftentimes there are code violations that occur. Someone comes in and attempts to rezone, maybe you put a PUD over the site or something. And then all of a sudden, all enforcement stops. And I think that's a city policy or practice, that is not a statutory issue, I don't believe. I think it's just something that we do at the city. Once somebody's come in and maybe gotten a PUD, which, if everything in the PUD was in fact carried out, the code violations would no longer exist. But there's, there's nothing to have that process go forward. Meanwhile, that code violation could continue for another five years if nobody does anything with the PUD.
Well, I've been told that there's, somebody in the city goes out and looks and makes sure that the PUD is built as it's required to be built.
Yes, but there's not a timeline on it, Pat. I mean, once it's done, we're supposed to inspect and see that the PUD is, the conditions have in fact been met. But if, if nothing happens, the-
I definitely have no problem with the idea of having a PUD have an expiration date.
If we can, if that could be accomplished, that's something different. But I'm, I'm talking about, I suppose somebody just applies for it and the reason they did was really not to ever go forward with what they tell us about, but it's just to prevent any further code enforcement action. And our code enforcement people, as soon as that's done, stop.
Well, the process of rezoning to a PUD would give you an opportunity to consider whether or not the land use is appropriate. The zoning is appropriate. So if it was a violation under one zoning district and they're asking to rezone to permit a specific use or activity and you think that that use or activity is harmful in some way or incompatible with neighbors, you can deny that rezoning and the code violation exists because the zoning was not changed. If you approve the zoning, you're saying the violation is no longer really a nuisance to the community in this zoning and use is appropriate.
Except when, when it's not a, you know, straight up exchange and, and, you know, sometimes in these more complex PUDs, you know, what they provide for doesn't really replace the code violation just with a blessing. I mean, it's, it's supposed to become something else. So what you're voting on may not be that the code enforcement, that the code violation should continue, you're saying it should become something else.
Well, Mr. Chairman, maybe I'll add this to the list of things we're looking at. Add the expiration of a PUD list we're looking at.
We, well, yes, we will revisit that again. I know that we have explored that several years ago, had a determination, but I, I will bring it back up on reversion clauses and sunsetting.
We have had applicants agree in the past and-
True, and if they, if, you know, if they agree to that, that may be something different also, so.
We have had some PUDs where the zoning they were requesting was a temporary use until they developed it as something else and they wrote that into their PUD that in three years it would revert back to I-2. And we have seen that and applicants can do that today. Can revert that today.
We had a case, Susan doesn't want to talk about legal stuff here anymore. We're making Susan, she's got goosebumps, we're making her nervous. Development Services, JJ?
Your next planning commission meeting will be during the Arts Festival, so we are working on some art alternatives to find you some parking in one of the garages. So anticipate an email from me before your next meeting and we will get that arranged.
Well, I sent Mr. Couch a text today because when I pulled in, our parking spaces were mostly filled by city trucks or-
We're working on that too.
Contractors. And I said, maybe you want to find some alternate parking for us?
We're aware of that.
Because that's been going on for a long time. Thank you though, JJ. Municipal counselor?
Nothing.
Nothing more?
No more.
Anyone else, Commissioners? Motion to adjourn? Thank you, we're done.